... fifth, under new business. Presentation by the United States Army Special Operations Command Jade Helm for July 15th, 2015 through September 15th, 2015. We have Mr. Thomas Meade here. If you would come forward, welcome. I think he's been, he's come all the way from Edville, North Carolina to make this happen.
Thank you all very much for having me here this evening. I bring you greetings from Fort Bragg, North Carolina, United States Army Special Operations Command. I just want to be able, thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight to the City Council of Big Spring. This is a, this is a, an honor for us to be here, to address you and, and give you some information on the exercise that we'll be conducting this summer in Howard County. My name's Tom Meade. I'm a retired special forces senior non-commissioned officer. I spent 20 years in the Army, I spent 13 with special operations. I'm currently a contractor working for United States Army Special Operations Command as an operations planner and an exercise designer for the Jade Helm project. With me this evening, I have Master Sergeant Tim Robison. He's an active duty Green Beret with Third Special Forces Group out of Fort Bragg. Tim's helping us design this exercise to get it going, make sure it goes in the right My purpose this evening, sure we're, is it here?
Yes.
All right. So my purpose here this evening is we are seeking written invitation and approval from local officials to conduct the realistic military training exercise within the jurisdiction of the city of Big Spring. Just to give you guys a little understanding of what realistic and what we define as realistic military training. Realistic military training is any training that we conduct outside of a federal installation. This means we're out in the public, we're here in your communities. The RMT process was designed by United States Special Operations Command down in Tampa, Florida by General Votel's staff. General Votel is the commanding general of Special Operations Command who controls all the special operators throughout the Department of Defense. But the most important thing is, is it ensures proper coordination between the Department of Defense and the local entities. Through the process, we're required, as why I'm here tonight is to receive a, or to ask for a letter of invitation from local officials inviting us into your community to allow us to train our soldiers for the next fight that we could, that they could encounter. We're not training for Afghanistan and Iraq, the things that we've done in the last 15 years. We're looking forward and we want to make sure that these guys are trained properly. This is where we need the help of the local communities. We coordinate with all the local state and federal law enforcement. We've already been and we've coordinated with the police chief here in Big Spring. We've coordinated with Sheriff Parker already. We have coordinated up at DPS at the state level already. So everybody from a law enforcement aspect understands what the exercise is and we want to make sure that we are completely plugged in with them to make sure they understand what's going on. We have a public affairs officer who does a complete public affairs review based off of the activities that will occur. We do licensing agreements and memorandums of agreement and memorandums of use with landowners and local governments to allow us to do things on their property. The land use agreements that we do with, with the local public, we don't just come in to somebody's property and we won't trespass on somebody's property without the agreement of that landowner. The licensing agreement truly allows us, or it releases liability from the landowner. And we do a full risk assessment and medical plan. We've already linked in with the hospital. We understand how they, they get the life flight. We also have medical personnel that will be on site to assist should anything happen. What is Jade Helm? Jade Helm is a challenging eight-week exercise. Truly in this area, in the Martin and Howard County area, we're only going to be here for about five to five and a half weeks. The eight weeks comes in where it's the preparation and the planning that happens back in Florida and in the Mississippi area. The exercise is a joint military and interagency activity. What this means is we have members, or we have units from every military service participating in the exercise with us. And we also have some of our interagency partners such as the FBI, the DEA, and some of the other agencies assisting us and working with us in the exercise. The exercise is unconventional warfare. I'm going to explain that from two different angles. Number one, conventional warfare. Conventional warfare, when you think of that, that is tanks on tanks, uniformed enemy on uniformed enemy, fighting in formation against each other. As you know, we don't normally fight that way. Our, our country doesn't fight battles that way for the most part. We fight more of an unconventional war. So unconventional, to explain that, I'm a student of history, so I'm going to explain it from a historical perspective. In World War II, the Germans came in and they invaded France. At that time, the French Resistance stood up. This was a resistance group within France and they were trying to eject Germany from taking over their country. They conducted operations such as sabotage, subversion, they hit logistics lines, they would do hit-and-run attacks against the German outposts. What a lot of folks don't know is American forces and American advisors were with those French Resistance soldiers throughout World War II. Those men were members of the Office of Strategic Services, the Jedberg Teams. That is the forerunner of United States Army Special Forces. That is where we draw our lineage from. Since 1952, United States Army, the United States Army Special Forces has had the charter to conduct unconventional warfare throughout the globe. The exercise is going to be throughout seven states. Texas is the main bulk of the activity, I would tell you. And we are, we were, are spread from east to west, north to south, throughout the state of Texas. It is a Special Operations Command, General Votel-sponsored exercise to improve special operations forces' ability to conduct unconventional warfare as part of the national security. The exercise will occur from July to September. What we see here in Martin and Howard County is the guys will come in about August 7th or so and they'll depart somewhere about September 10th or so. Who's participating? As you can see, it's all of our special operators. United States Army Special Forces Command, the Green Berets. Navy SEALs will be conducting operations over in Mississippi and Louisiana. The Air Force Special Operations Command will be flying specialty aircraft for us for infiltration and resupply of the, the operators on the ground. The Marines Special Operators will be working down in the San Antonio area. And the 82nd Airborne Division will jump an entire battalion into Camp Bullis and take down targets inside Camp Bullis on a federal installation. The exercise locations in this area, we're working throughout Martin and Howard County. We've, as some of you know, we briefed the Howard County Commissioners Court yesterday morning. We received approval to operate within Howard County. And the reason why we're here is if we want to do, if we are to do activities within your city, we're asking for your support as well. We are also in Tom Green County and Sliker County. We'll have a detachment that's working down there. And we'll also have a team that's working down in Kimball County and Edwards County. And we'll have some activity occurring down in Real County as well. Why did we choose Texas? Number one, United States Special Operations Command has been conducting exercises in Texas for a few years. We've done numerous exercises here. A lot of times you don't hear a lot about it unless someone like me comes to brief you about those exercises. And we know that Texans, Texans are historically supportive of our efforts to make sure that our soldiers, sailors, and airmen, and Marines are ready to fight that next fight and train them for that next fight. This is going to be taking their skill sets to the next level. This is taking some of the advanced skills and some of the newer techniques that they're using to be able to test some of those before they go downrange to some of these other countries. Some of the things that we require is areas of undeveloped land with low population densities. United States Army Special Operations Command, being the director of the, of the exercise, desires to have a very rural area for us to be able to operate in. Because the last few years, these guys have, in Afghanistan and Iraq, they receive aerial resupply by helicopter about once a week. They live in buildings, they have connectivity to the internet to be able to, to talk to their command, but also be able to talk to home. When they come out here to Martin and Howard County, they're not going to have those luxuries. In the scenario that we've built, they're going to have to operate outside of those normal support mechanisms and rely on the folks, the civilians that are in the area to be able to support them. We have a backside support element that actually will replicate that. But we also ask for, we can't do the exercise without the public's help. Things that we look for from that perspective is we look for people that are willing to be a role player, to just be someone who goes and gives a little nugget of information for them to build an intelligence picture, to understand the scenario better and be able to operate better. We look for people that are willing to transport our guys because they have to move around in a clandestine manner. For example, in the back of a horse trailer in the middle of the night so nobody can see them. These are ways that they have to operate in, in foreign countries and when they're not supposed to be in those countries. We also look for landowners and business owners who would be willing to allow us to, on a landowner perspective, to be able to, to use their land, maybe live on their land, or to use a barn or an old barn to be able to conduct a meeting in the middle of the night for them to do planning with a higher command element. Shop owners to be able to use a back storeroom or a warehouse to do these types of meetings as well. They have to adapt to the unfamiliar terrain that's out here. I would tell you, I have driven probably since July, I would tell you I've driven across the state, back and forth across the state of Texas at least 10 times if you look at the mileage on the vehicles that I drive. And the terrain here in Texas is absolutely so varied from the, from the east side to the west side and it prepares our guys for those different environments. But they also have to understand the socioeconomic aspects of areas and what support and how they can support that community as well through, through their operations. They have to be, they operate in and around communities because that's the way we operate throughout the globe. Ordinary citizens are the first ones to notice something that's different. And that, you know, it, it causes them to have to be that much more careful. The impact on the area, throughout the exercise, throughout the seven states, we'll have about 1,200 people that are participating in the exercise from all of DOD and our interagency partners. The footprint that we see here in Martin and Howard County is only about 60 people. Very small footprint. Not a lot of burden on the land. We've had some great Americans that are willing to allow us to use their property already within, between the two counties. And that physical impact is very low. The funding that we see, we, these guys have to eat. We have to supply them. We have to have fuel. I have a backside support that will be driving trucks. I have specialty role players that come in and I'll have to put them in lodging. We see between the two counties about $150,000 that'll be injected into your economy from that, from those type of activities. For example, food. If my team says I need 50 pounds of potatoes, I'm not bringing those potatoes from Fort Bragg. I'm not bringing those from North Carolina. My guys will go to the grocery store, they'll purchase 50, 50 pounds of potatoes and then they will be appropriately put in, put in an item or in a location to be recovered by the training unit. So we're going to buy those things here. What can you expect? Now, understand that this, this slideshow is our standard slideshow that we use to brief the counties and, and the cities. Within the cities, you won't see most of this, I would tell you. For example, increased aircraft in the area at night. You'll see that out in the rural area. We have a resupply, an aerial drop that will occur and then some paratroopers as well will, will jump into Martin County in early August. It won't happen within the city limits. Noise complaints. If my guys are noisy here in the city, they're really doing something wrong, is what I would tell you. That third bullet, conducting suspicious activities. That's where, here in the city, we, we're looking at using the city from an aspect of conducting clandestine meetings within the city limits. There'll be no kinetic activity, there won't be gunfire going on, there won't be things like that. Our footprints within the cities are probably five to six people at the most when we do these meetings. But one of the most important things, and I know I've said it previously, is we link in with the law enforcement officers. They know when and where we're conducting activity. That way, we actually invite the police department to be near the activity. That way, they're able to answer constituent calls on that. The other thing that we do is we brief that prior to the activity going on. That way, the, the police chief can let the dispatch know that this is occurring so that when they field phone calls from, from concerned citizens, they're able to meet that off, or cut that off at the pass, so to say. And the other thing that we do as well is we make sure that it tries to get out at the morning and evening roll call so the officers that are on duty know what's going on and know where it's occurring. One of the things that we do as well, they will be carrying weapons, but it won't be live ammunition. It'll all be blank ammunition. Just to correct one thing that was in the newspaper on Sunday that I, that I read was they'll have blank ammunition, but there will not be any explosions. We won't, we won't be setting off live demolition out here. The guys will be wearing civilian attire or a mixed uniform. They may be wearing fatigue bottoms and a tee shirt, but that's not normally anything that's out of the ordinary in West Texas from what I've seen, especially during hunting season. And they may be driving civilian vehicles throughout the area. So really, within the city limits, if you notice my guys, they're probably really doing something wrong. Safety measures. One of the most important things, the number one priority for United States Army Special Operations Command is the safety of our civilians and the exercise participants. We want to make sure that everybody's safe when it comes to this. Again, daily communication between law enforcement and Department of Defense. Anytime we're conducting activity in your jurisdiction, we will make sure that we coordinate. We have medics. Each special forces detachment has two special forces medics that are trained to a very high trauma level that will be with each element. We also have a support element that will have a senior non-commissioned officer, special forces medic who is responsible for the evac and anything that those two medics can't, cannot handle. He'll be the one that'll be directly interfacing with the hospitals throughout the area. We coordinate with the life flight. In fact, I was able to sit down with Jonetta Sweat this afternoon and get some information based off of the hospital and the life flight to be able to pass on to our medical planners. Clear marking of the participants. That, for us, that's one of the, the big things. We make sure that all of our guys have some type of marking that, that they'll be, all be wearing an armband with a marking that identifies them as part of the exercise. And if we have role players, for example, a, a landowner or a business owner who is participating in the exercise, we'll ensure that they have marking as well, that they're part of the exercise. Because there are times where we ask at times the law enforcement folks to do a traffic stop for us, to check our guys, to see why they're doing what they're doing, when they're doing it, and why they're doing it. Because the police, I know I've been questioned by the police, and they know how to make you squirm. So what we'll do is we'll make sure that the officers, should they decide to participate, will make sure that they are marked as well. That way, the detachments and the members know how to react properly. If that officer conducts a traffic stop and he's not wearing one of those armbands, that is a true traffic stop. They want to make sure that they act appropriately for that traffic stop. We also do coordination with local residents. So if I, and what I mean by that is, just as we do with the, the law enforcement, if there's activity occurring around an area, we will actually go out to doors and knock on doors, introduce ourselves, and let them know that there'll be activity happening between this time and this time. That way, they're not caught off guard. That should help lessen the calls of the constituents to, to the law enforcement as well. We do fire, fire condition review, that's really for our rural environments aspect. And our public affairs office as well does public announcements. For example, in North Carolina, for another exercise, they do newspaper ads announcing the exercise. They do radio spots and they also get with the local, local television stations and they do a small, short announcement on the television to allow, to get the widest dissemination that the activity or the exercise is occurring. At this time, if you have any questions or concerns, I'm willing to answer those at this time. And I tell everybody, I know all the council, councilmen have a copy of the briefing. And I tell everybody, the most important slide, if you didn't get anything out of the previous 10 slides, the most important slide is this slide right here. This is our contact information. If you have any questions or concerns, or you have, you come up with a question afterwards, or you say, hey, Tom, I would like to help out. I'm a local business owner, I got, I've got a warehouse that I can let you use in the city. I'd like to help out, I'd like to be a role player. Please give me a call, drop me an email. Both of those, please, and what I ask is, I ask two things. Number one, the cellphone is my personal cellphone. Please leave a message. Because I don't always, if I'm in a meeting with somebody or I don't have my phone with me, I will get back to you. I will give you a call. The emails, I ask everybody to please email both of those. And the reason I say that is because the top one, I can only get while I'm at Fort Bragg. It's on our system there. And the bottom one is my commercial email where I'm able to receive while I'm on the road. And I am in Texas probably every two weeks. God bless Texas. The, y'all are regimented. Every city council and every county commissioners either meets on the second or fourth Monday or Tuesday of the month. So I can only hit so many. So every two weeks since, I know since October, I have been in the state of Texas briefing a city council or a county commissioners court since October. So please hit me on those emails if you have any questions or concerns. Leave a message on my phone and I will get back with you. Mr. Kimmich is our, our project lead. And then obviously the public affairs officer, if you have any additional questions, please contact them as well. They, they, they should be able to help you out from that perspective as well. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm willing to answer anything you have, sir.
Mr. Meade, how often do you do a operation like this? Is this, is this done annually or?
Yes, sir. So the Jade Helm project is a new project that has come along from General Cleveland, from his staff at United States Army Special Operations Command. This, this exercise is planned to be conducted yearly. We, we conduct an exercise that's similar to this. And I, I say similar because the scope and the breadth of the exercise is nowhere comparable to what we do here. But they conduct that exercise six times a year in North Carolina. So, did I answer your question, sir?
Sure. And I guess it's not only for training, you know, special operations, but in the long, I guess the final result is to save lives in special situations also.
Yes, sir. And we, one of the things that we've always looked at is that the more sweat a guy uses in training, the, the less chance of him bleeding on the battlefield. So therefore, this is, by training him properly before he goes overseas, we're, we're hoping that it, he remembers those lessons and he comes back.
Mr. Ward, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. First, Mr. Meade and Master Sergeant Rossin, I want to thank you for your service to our country. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I was, just had a couple of questions. And you've already started talking to the landowners and setting things up. I just have to ask, how does FBI and DEA work with the military on an operation like this?
Well, generally speaking, sir, the FBI and DEA provide us liaison officers up at our command level depending on how the, how the scenario is written. One of the ways the FBI, FBI and DEA are working with us here is in Arizona, they will actually do some questioning for us at, at one of the airports in, in Arizona.
And, or do y'all use any personnel from NATO, UN, or DHS?
No, sir, not currently for Jade Helm, it is US only. We, that, that has been one of the discussions that, I'm not sure if it has occurred yet, but for Jade Helm 15, it will be US personnel only.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I think you've answered all of my questions or concerns. As far as being out in the community, you have a pretty good plan of action of notifying everybody that you're going to be in that, in that area. So that was my only concern. You've done this numerous times before, so I'm sure you've had situations pop up and you have to make refinements or adjustments to your, well, welcome to Howard County and Martin County.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Meade, welcome. It all sounds, and I have no hesitation, and I'd like to echo what Marvin said, but I'd like to ask one question. Who has the final call if it comes to that? I can't imagine coming to it, but suppose a final call has to be made on something between you and say our mayor. Who has the, the same voice?
From what perspective, sir? Of where we're going to operate or where?
That you can envision.
I'm sorry, sir.
Any, under any circumstance that you can imagine, who makes the final call if that should come up?
Well, if you guys say that we're, we're not welcome here and you say that you don't want us to conduct activity within, within the city of Big Spring, it's truly the, the council and the mayor. We have no say and we have no, we're, we're here as, that's where we're seeking invitation as opposed to.
I was thinking more in terms after you get started. If you're already welcome and you're here and something should come up, I'll give you an example, okay? Colonel Jim Little can tell you that in August, the first few days of August, we're going to have a hang glide here and they're all over the place.
Yes, sir.
All over the place in the county. I can't imagine something coming up, can you, Colonel Little? I can't imagine something coming up, can you, Colonel Little? But suppose it should come up, who has the supreme voice? You?
It's the community, it is the community, sir. So if you guys tell us, "Hey, we have something going on and we don't, we don't need you guys, or we don't want you guys in, operating in the city," and you block out some dates for me, I can plan around it. Um, that, it, sir, it's truly an invitation. I, you know, I, I was brought up in the South, so if I'm invited to a house, it's great. If I'm, if I'm told, or told, "Sir, we would like you to leave," or, "How about you come back in an hour?" That's what I, that's what I do, because, sir, that, number one, that's how I was raised, and number two, we're here at the invitation of you. We don't come in, we don't take over. We want the community to accept us, uh, as opposed to being any type of, um, uh, any type of force that is hereby forced, I guess you could say. Does that answer your question, sir?
I'm satisfied with it. Uh, just one more thing. It's going to be in the county, but I think the citizens of Big Spring need to know it might be within their city too, is that right?
Yes, sir, and that's why we're here briefing this evening, um, and that's why we make sure that the Public Affairs Officer does that messaging through newspaper, through radio, through television, to make sure it gets out to the widest dissemination.
Ms. Harvard?
Yes, uh, I have one question, and, um, I'm not sure how to ask it, but does your training also include, like, drug cartel type?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Just, okay.
It i- it is a, um, it is a military scenario. We don't, we're not putting the drug cartel aspects into it, um, for Jade Helm 15. That may change. Um, I'm not a scenario writer, so I don't, I don't tell them what to write, they tell me what they're, they've written. So, um, as of right now, there's not.
Thank you.
Ms. Marcus? Colonel Little, did you have a question you would like to ask?
I think you've covered it.
Okay.
It's going quite well, but, uh, we do have an active airport up here, and, you know, as, uh, was just mentioned, we do have an exercise, hang gliding activities during the period of time that you're talking about. We'll just coordinate well with you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we'll make sure we do that. And that's why, that's one of the things we, by, by me coming early and making sure I'm briefing and getting the invitation, I know who the players are, I know who I need to talk to. Um, the other thing that we do as well is, um, I've done it with some of the county ci- or, excuse me, county commissioners and the, the ci- city councils that I've done. If a councilman wants to know, "Hey, there's something going on in my area," please let me know that, because I can inform you as well, um, and we can sit down and let you know what's happening. Because we also understand that, um, sometimes the police isn't the first place, person they call, especially, um, out here in Texas. A lot of times, they will call the councilman. They may call the police and then call the councilman, but you're, I, I could guarantee if they see something and they don't know about it, y'all are here, and as long as we brief y'all and, and keep you informed as well, um, I, the bottom line is the open communication. We want to maintain that. We want to make sure that everybody is aware of what's going on.
You have questions? Thank you very much, and we-
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate, uh, yes, uh, we appreciate you being here and look forward to you guys being here, and hopefully the end result will save someone down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have people that, that have asked to speak, um, and Mr. Mead will be here, uh, Carrie? Carrie? You asked to speak? No?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Uh, Ms. York?
Yes, I do this.
If you come up to the podium, state your name, please. Uh, about three minutes, we've got a lot of speakers.
My name's Kimberly York, and I actually am one of the county residents, and I'm a little distressed with the fact, A, the county issued an invitation without letting the citizens know that it's going on in the county. Um, I think that we should have been informed, I feel like it's being hidden from us about, you know, and then all of a sudden, an invitation's issued and it's on us. And I'm a little bit concerned about that. I, I think as citizens, we have the right. I also am a hospice nurse. I have a lot of concerns about our elderly population in this county and in this city by things that are going on and being distressed. It may double our phone calls for home healths and hospices, because we will be the first persons you call, they call, um, and get distressed. Um, you know, I mean, what the press is putting out is really different than what we're seeing here today. You know, the press is telling us, "Oh, you're not going to hear about it, you're not going to see it, you're, you know, it's just not going to affect your lives." Well, what we're reading here is that it might affect our lives. And I think as, as citizens of this county, we should have a voice in whether that invitation is issued. Um, I've got some, like I said, some real concerns. There's safeties for civilians. Why are we looking at safety issues if there's no, nothing to see here right now? By the way, I am a military brat, I do support the military. I feel that there's other ways of training than issue, than inflicting it on the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and you do have a voice, you have county commissioners. Let's see, is that all for the Jade, uh, Jade Helm? Next item on the agenda, item six, first reading of a resolution inviting United States Army Special Operations Command to conduct a large-scale military training exercise called Jade Helm 15 in Big Spring, Howard County, Texas, from July 15th, 2015 through September 15th, 2015, and providing an effective date. Ms. Edwards?
The resolution in your board packet simply tracks some of the information that you've heard today and officially invites them to conduct this exercise.
Okay. Entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McDonnell. No further questions, I call for a vote.